All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Tuesday, May 20th, meeting of the Marquette City Planning Commission. We'll start with Roll Call, so Commissioner Pringle, you can start us off.
Commissioner Pringle here.
Margaret Reiner here.
Alex Robinson here.
Kevin Clegg here.
Dallas Butler here.
Jane Thacken here. And Sir Melphell is here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I hope we have approved the agenda as written.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Same? Okay. The minutes from our last meeting of May 6th, any additions, comments, changes?
Yeah, and the old business, when the motion says that it's approving the agenda, not approving the future PC by, or the PC bylaws. So that needs to be re-written.
Sorry, what?
Here on PC bylaws, it says, "Motion being carried to approve the agenda as presented." Rather than a motion to update our files.
Oh, I see.
That's on me.
Okay.
Good catch. All right, any other changes or additions? All right, backing consensus, things look good, don't they? Okay. Are there any conflicts of interest for today's? Anything on the agenda that could be? No conflicts of interest, so we will start with our first agenda item, which is a public hearing on our land development code. Dave or Andrew, you want to come start us off?
Yeah, I'll just say that this is a culmination of nearly six months of work. I think we've had nine planning commission meetings, work sessions on these comprehensive set of amendments. Every, there's 15 articles in the land development code, and we are addressing 13 of the 15 with various amendments, so it's fairly comprehensive. Again, we had a joint work session with the city commission before we got very far with this, and I think we had one meeting before that joint work session to talk about this. And then we came up with a whole bunch of other stuff that wasn't even contemplated in that initial work session, but, yeah, so we've got a lot of material, a lot more than I thought we would have when we started the project, and of course, this is something we've been doing each year, and I was talking to Alex before the meeting, and, you know, this has worked out pretty good for our downtime of year to look in the fall when applications start to tail off, instead of trying to working on the code and what we can fix it, how we can make it better for everybody, and we've been doing that for several years, and I think we've seen everything that's in this, we have, do have, been over this material at least one of those ten meetings we've had, so don't really plan to address anything in particular, but we'll just go through them from, it's all now organized from the first section, Article 2, where we start with definitions, and not everything in here, again, here's new material, some of it is in there for context, but we do have a lot of new material that is highlighted and underlined, material that's being, that's proposed to be eliminated is shown with strike through, and so, yeah, everything from two, Article 2 to Article 14, we touched Article 15. So unless there's any questions about any other, we're not going to address anything specific because we can, uh...
But unfortunately, we did touch Article 15.
Okay. I know there were two meetings, which I thought were...
Commissioner Pringle?
Yes, I thought when we talked about parking requirements, that we were going to allow the people to choose the number of parking spaces they actually needed and not dictate what they needed, so that we don't have another problem with the company that needs to have more parking spaces because of the number of their employees, but must have been the building size that limited the amount of parking, so now they have to park on the road, on the hill going up. I thought, even like in an apartment house, we cut the parking down, which is nice, but we cut it, the people should be allowed to pick the amount of parking they need.
Can you tell us what section you're on specifically? If we can all get on the same page.
Article 9.
Article 9?
Yeah. But that didn't come up. We've made changes in the past that address that issue with specific land uses. For retail and office, there is only a requirement for two parking spaces. Everything else is voluntary, and there's some other uses in there that are voluntary, basically, optional use or number of parking spaces required, but we haven't gone into the other uses that have specific standards have not been changed, and that wasn't even discussed in any of those ten meetings we had this year.
Okay, I misunderstood, because I thought I brought that up. They need more parking, you should be allowed to have it.
Oh, what you're saying is parking maximum.
Yes, should, should be changed.
There's always next year, we can always get back into it next year, unless you have a specific recommendation right now that you want to change, if there's something you want to bring up within there.
Well, I know, one is that right now, where a guy has to come up with one parking space, one more parking space, and sometimes you just can't do it. But, again, like an apartment house, a two-bedroom apartment house, you should be allowed to have at least two parking spaces per unit. That's for sure, and then you should have a couple extras in case there's ever a guest that wants to come and stay overnight, or if they want to have a, like a travel trailer or some other type of recreational vehicle, there's no place to put it.
There's a process in the code for dealing with appealing the parking maximum, and the site plan we're looking at tonight has far more parking than what is allowed by the code, if they just went by, if, if there wasn't a process to require or request an exemption.
But at the same time, in tonight's, when we get to it, you're also saying they need more parking.
Yeah.
Or, or employees, or whatever reason.
Between the process and here that allows for people to submit some kind of study or a reasoned explanation of why our maximum parking standard doesn't work for them, there's also the variance process.
Just, it all depends on who's listening to their request. I mean, depends on the group that's here. If you get the wrong group, you're not going to get anything through. You can request things, but it doesn't mean people are going to listen.
Right, and then, like I said, if there's a specific section of the code that you would like to submit, which changed, we haven't talked about that, but I think at this point we have been through a lot of this stuff.
Okay, I just misunderstood when we talked about it, that's all. I didn't see it ringing until now.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? I think, because normally we'd have applicants, but the applicants in this case is sort of ourselves, sort of the planning commission was willing to put the code together and these amendments. Dave or Andrew, did we receive any correspondence about this?
Okay, so, yeah, there is one thing, or two things, that I believe Dave emailed me about, that I sent, no, okay, all right. So, when I was updating this, I found that there was an error in the residential limit animal keeping section. Somehow through the years, reviewing an important paragraph got removed, and our code was referencing this paragraph, so let me check.
There's a couple fixes here that were unintended, we call, I call.
So, here in the animal limit keeping, it was missing this line right here, A, requirements applicable to all residential limit animal keeping. It just had these numbers, and then all of these sections for the chickens, the bees, the rabbits referred to this A, which was missing. So we're proposing to put the A back in, and then call this B again, so fixing it, basically.
Okay.
Then the other item was... Right, so, due to the volume of permits that we're getting, it is, has been very difficult for us to meet the 10 business days of the workload that we have, so we're asking for when we get swamped, I mean, we're, usually we try to be around five, but to change the code so we're not, hands are tied, to allow for 15 business days to review a permit. If we don't get to, currently, if we don't get a permit within 10 business days, it on that one's screwed. So a lot of times we have to drop some things, and then try or work overtime and things like that, so we're just trying to make it work for that, the busy time, and to give us a little bit more time, so that was another proposal.
Well, just use it to do things. So anybody have any thoughts on that, just changing, lengthening their review process time for permits? Anybody agree with that? Seems reasonable. So that's really only the only new stuff.
Everything else you guys reviewed.
Great. Any thoughts on that? Did we receive any correspondence? You said Dave?
No.
Okay, all right. No correspondence, there's an opportunity for public testimony, if anyone would like to come to the podium, state your name and address. Anyone has comments on the land development code? No? Okay. Let me see, the land development code. Commissioner Discussion, anyone want to, final, last, last word about these amendments?
No.
Anybody else? All right. Then, let's see, would anyone like to propose an emotion?
After review of the land development code amendments presented as case 0100A052025, and after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the draft LDC amendments, planning commission finds the draft LDC amendments are consistent with the recommendations, goals, and policy objectives of the community master plan, comply with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, represent an improvement to regulation that affects property owners in the city, and therefore are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the city commission as presented.
Great. Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Reiner, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passed, thanks. So moving along, are there any citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items at this time? When we get to the site plan, we will be opportunities there to talk about the GMC project, but any general comments right now on any other agenda items?
Is there an agenda? I didn't, I came in late, but...
Oh, sure, yeah, it should be copied and shared.
No, there's not, it's not, the only other item on our, our agenda is the site plan for GMC cycle. They need to come up to address.
Yeah, if you could come and state your name and your address, please.
All right. Tyler Peterson, 718 Homestead Street. I was informed, yeah, by Andrew, I've been trying to potentially build an ADU, and I might have missed that discussion, was that like the first thing?
Yeah, so they approved the recommendations to the city.
Okay, great, and so, just to confirm, that's like, you can build up to a 770 some square foot?
768.
Yeah, okay, and there's, no matter the primary structure on the...
Correct, that's what was proposed.
Okay, and the other thing with that, too, was, the house I live in is pretty small, so like the footprint, it can use, can you extend that still, or is that just like in accordance to the ADU that you could build up to that? Do you still have to be in the confines of your...
Your primary home, the, the 768 square foot ADU would be in addition to your current home, is that what you're asking?
Well, I, the way I've interpreted it is that you couldn't build like an accessory structure greater than the footprint of your existing...
Oh, the language about the 50%.
Yeah, that was, right, so the only thing in there is that you can maximum 768.
Okay, cool. You guys are all in favor of that?
We just approved it.
Sweet.
Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, the commission has to approve this, this recommendation before it's law.
Yeah, and so that's, when do you think that happens?
End of June. End of June, then 10 days onto that before it's actually law, so mid-July.
Okay.
All, all, anything that goes into effect here is going to be in, like, early July, July 10 to 15.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else wanting to address the commission on agenda items? Okay, and seeing none, we don't have the old business, we'll dive into our new business, which is 04 SPR 0525, the site plan review for the new GMC vehicles sale site at 1101 West US 41. So we'll start that process with city and staff comments.
The staff have reviewed the proposed site plan with construction of a new commercial building, new parking lot, dumpster enclosure, landscaping and site improvements for 1101 West US 41, and have provided comments regarding the plans. Those comments and applicant's narrative response are in the packet. In the staff report, we provided zoning district standards, and proposed uses, and provided dimensional regulations. Also, as Dave had mentioned earlier, their proposal exceeds the minimum parking space requirement, and they're asking to exceed the maximum because they need the inventory spaces. And then the site plan review standards, the relationship to the community master plan, and the attachments, site plan review application, the police department staff comments, applicant's responses to Department of Public Works engineering, fire, and zoning staff comments, and the area map, block map, photos of the site, and the site plan stuff. Do you guys have any questions or comments for town?
No, thank you, Andrew, appreciate that. This type of applicant, you could come forward and state your name and address and give us like a quick overview of the project, and see if there's any question.
I'm Brian Sadwin, and the sibling here on the project. And with Wickwire Associates, my address is 2448 US 41 West Marquette, number 240. Yeah, Nikki, the general manager is also here to talk about any operational questions you may have, or, or the architectural stuff as well. We do have detailed architectural plans that were included, unfortunately, the architect wasn't able to make it here today, and if there are some specific questions, he did say we could comment on that, but basically, what happens in a, in most dealerships, including GM, a lot of the exterior bulk of the buildings are driven by GM themselves. If you run into this, I'm sure, over the last several years, if you have chain commercial businesses coming into your area, they all pretty much have their standards, and they try to get all their facilities all the same, so. So basically, to run down a few things, we're, we're really just jumping from one side of US 41 to the other side. It gives them a much better view, it's, it's actually a much easier approach into the business as well, and it's, and it's safer. Early in the project, we went to MDOT, who also brought this to their quarter committee for review, and they're just, we're at a point right now where all we need from them is our stormwater permit, and we're really not changing the drive entrance or anything like that, all we're doing is lowering the grade a little bit, so they'll be a little bit degraded in the right way, but other than that, it's pretty much, everything is on site. From what you see out there right now, just to give you a little general idea, what will happen is, there used to be a hotel on the site, and it's, it's up in the air quite a bit, there were storage units on the backside of it, which dropped out, and to maximize the, the area of the site, we're actually cutting the first part of the hotel, it used to be, we're lowering that grade by about three feet, plus or minus, and then leveling a little bit more with, with the back of the site, and that creates a little bit more space for our, our mobility and roaming the site. As your staff mentioned here, the, the parking was a little confusing to us, but once we got a little deeper into the site, for, for a car dealership like this, there's nothing that really specifically says what you have for display, but there is what's called hard surface display parking. That's not like official parking. So we think we've got it worked out, but we'll make sure, we'll work with staff here on, we'll have like detailed areas for body shop work, for service shop work, for customer parking, and then for, for employees as well. So there's several parts of the ordinance that came together for the parking lot calculations, but your ordinance did work in a situation that what we need to get out there, does work. In regards to the site, one of the bigger concerns out there is the stormwater in that area is a little tricky, that is, it eventually goes through West Hill, and MDOT did have some concerns on that, but what we're able to do, we have enough property out to the east end of the, of the site, where we have a large stormwater basin, and then the water actually has to build up quite a bit, and backflow of the, of the bike can go into a small line that goes into the cloud and into the storm, so it's only a six-inch storm. We're actually reducing the stormwater significantly from what went there before. The, the old site used to overflow right into the MDOT rightaway. We have everything graded away from the rightways and back into the parking lot, so we pick up everything internally, and we send it to the east. All roof drains will be collected and put to the south part of the property as well, so we've got a couple of minor landscaping items that we still need to address, and it's just a, a small compound, a number of shrubs and trees, but we'll make sure that's there. We do have a really nice buffer already to the south, it's a, it's a big hill, and we're going down even further, and then to the, to our east, there is a residential property, so we're doing both landscaping items there, and we're also including a four-foot-high privacy fence over there, so in regards to, to that, that's some utilities, we're trying to use the same connections, so we don't have to go into a cloud to do any, any major works there, and the size of the utilities that were from the hotel need to be working here, so. That's just kind of a basic overview of the site and what we did, and if you have any questions, I'll get up and ask.
Great, thank you, that's really helpful.
Nikki, I don't know if you want to add anything, or...
No, I'm here if anybody has any questions on, you know, operations or employees or anything like that. Thank you both for coming. Does anyone have any quick questions for the applicants before we move on to the first projects?
Yeah, I do. Regarding employees, how many people do you anticipate working inside of the building at one time? It says here, you've got 13 spaces for employees, I figured you would have more than that.
We have about 40 employees.
Okay.
Fewer of our part time.
Is that...
I believe there is more than 13.
Maybe I'm seeing it on the, on the north side of the building, it says 13 spaces for employees.
I don't know if that's, that's probably not the total that's been worked out. Yeah, there's been different modifications to that, there's a lot of parking in the rear and that.
And like how we, how we do it now, you know, which will be similar, where, you know, the front facing you want to have for your customers, where our employees will be parking in the back.
Okay. Yeah.
And some of that is...
Plenty of parking in the back, I'm gonna say.
And some of that is some shift work in the back, so it's not like that's the total that's there all the time, so.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for applicants right now?
I will say, we need Nikki's last name.
Oh, Nikki, I do. Remalong. Do you want me to stand up for you?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. For the rest of her... Yeah, because I think it's the recording, okay.
It's actually, it's Nicole, N-I-C-H-O-L-L-E, and then Remalong, R-E-M-I-L-O-N-G.
Okay, if there's no questions at this point, is there any correspondence on this?
It's site plan review, so...
Oh, those, yeah, okay. Any public testimony, anyone wishing to speak one? Okay, seeing none, then we will open it up for commission discussion. Anyone have comments, thoughts? Commissioner Thacken?
Um, and I'm just wondering, because you said that our new LDC amendments won't be official at law until July, and so in the landscaping standards, we just passed new landscaping standards that recommend native plants and private and basic plants? Is there any way that we could...
When somebody submits something, they submit it and go as it is.
Okay. Cool. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Thacken?
Somebody mentioned that GM tries to keep up the main research in their building styles. I'm curious if there's any architecture, I don't see that here, but for architecture-wise, what this might look like color scheme-wise on the outside? Now, we try to, it became similar to the buildings near Marquette, so I was curious if there's been any thought to put to it.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a black, like metal exterior look, and then quite a bit glass, and that's about all you're going to get out of a civilization, or, or, you know, but there's breaks in the building and everything, and there are details called up in there. I'm going to forget about that.
Like the product, there's a lot of glass in it, but yeah, I mean, very professional, very, very nice looking, modern, modern.
I'd like to look for more of that material. Okay, other comments, thoughts?
Just one thing that we did last year when we went through that land development code... Just got one thing that we did last year when we went through that line of zoning code amendments, one of the recommendations was in site plan reduced in the standards that we recommend that the color palette of any buildings not include more than fifty percent black, white or shades, everything gray. And that, so that's a standard on North Third Street that people have to comply with in new buildings, but it's not required. But, what, what guys settled on was putting it in the list for site plan review as a recommendation. Just wanted to bring that up again, because I forgot like exactly what happened to them. That's what happened to me. The other thing while I'm talking, um, that you guys can recommend to change landscaping um, that's been proposed because landscaping is typically the last thing that gets done on any kind of a building site, especially new sites. Um, so you can just make a recommendation to change anything you see in there that's not, um, that doesn't comply with recommended code standards. But the applicant does not have to follow that recommendation. So it can't be a condition of approval.
Thanks Dave, thank for the clarification, um, that's, anyone want to entertain a motion or to be a further discussion? Um, could I ask that we recommend that they use the new, we're asked, yeah, that is a part of a motion. Yeah, Fisher, flag?
Yes, it'll be careful to go through line by line on the relevant standards.
Oh, do we?
No.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
For your findings of fact, I will, I would state that you should state that you looked through them at least, if you all agree, they met all those standards.
That should be in the language of a motion too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Fisher, flag?
I'll go for it.
Alright.
After review of the site plan and supplemental documentation dated four twenty-two twenty-five and the staff report for oh four SPR oh five twenty-five, the planning commission finds substantial compliance with the City of Marquette Land Development Code to the site plan review standards of section fifty-four dot fourteen oh two E and hereby approves the site plan with following conditions, that's uh, uh, an amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments and the recommendation that um, landscaping be changed to utilize native plants when possible.
Great, thanks, Fisher flag, any second? All second, alright, Fisher Pickin, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Alright, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get that one.
Yeah.
We just, so you know, we do usually include like your entire as option for landscaping items with local landscapers, you know, so as long as those are in the list and stuff, but I'm gonna.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, moving on to our second item of new business, we have a second site plan extension request for four twenty to North Third Street, the mixed-use building proposal. Everyone did, have a chance to read this over?
Have they changed companies, is that the reason for the extension? Who they were going to utilize, is that? Am I correct on that?
That's what they state in the letter, reason for extension request, BP, BP Properties has engaged a new architect and general contractor to facilitate the completion of our previously approved project.
Not sure, but it seems like that's what they said last year.
I think, I think.
I think the architect was from Minnesota or something, it came.
It's a new architect I'm working with now.
Okay, but this would be the less, the last extension, right?
Correct.
Around, so this would be the last, last extension. Yeah, Fisher, flag?
Question for Andrea, if you're working with a new architect, are these folks still planning the prefab design of the building where this, I seem to remember that that was going to be like a drop-in place building.
Yeah, so I haven't seen any revisions yet.
Okay.
And that's the problem, we've been waiting on revisions and I've been contacting them, we get the revisions, we've heard that line comes up. And now they hired a new architect and.
Kind of drag it out everything.
Not remembering that last year, there was um, when they, initially when they got their site plan approval, their final site plan still had um, an issue that they couldn't comply with and we ended up making out recommendations to change a portion of the LDC that would that they could comply with, it was in relation to the parking lot buffer to the property to the yard. And that was changed so that they didn't have to have a buffer there because it didn't, that was an example where the code didn't make sense, it's uh, do cookie better. Um, so they couldn't comply with that until the code was adopted, so they had to ask for an extension there. Um, and that made sense, so I think that was the first extension request and this is the second one, alright?
This is.
So, um, that's why, in the first case.
Okay, thank you, good clarification, anybody want to discuss this or is there a motion someone would like to make? Okay, you're number one.
Yeah. Uh, planning commission uh, should approve the request for an extension with the case oh two SUP oh six twenty-three with the expiration date to be six twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second? Alright, Fisher Better and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Alright, the extension passes, great. Alright, the third item of new business is just um, a letter of support, I can talk about this. Um, it's just, I have a colleague in my department at Northern who is trying to develop a position, a full breviation, full brev scholar program is just like a very old um, international exchange program between American universities and universities in other countries, so she wants to create a position in our department, which is Department of Environmental and Geographical Sciences to host someone who would maybe have expertise in community planning and development, and so she asked me to write a letter of support um, either just as myself or I even, I think a stronger letter would be with the support of the planning commission, so. Um, this, this person wouldn't like, you know, wouldn't necessarily um, shape the agenda or, you know, really be involved in any way, but might be able to provide a training or do a workshop or give a talk about community planning and development other countries in the world, so. Um, I just think it's a cool opportunity, I, our chances of actually getting this position are probably pretty slim, but I was just wondering if you all would support um, support this effort, I guess, in the letter.
And you can be honest, you can go, it's a terrible. Now, we did this through the school with a lady from Scotland and it was very interesting.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, I don't think she.
End girl.
Yeah, I don't think she has a single person or country in mind, so who knows, would they believe them, I just don't know, is it okay with the city?
It's not really the city's thing, you know?
Yeah, they wouldn't be like telling the city what to do or really doing anything with the city unless we invited them to give a talk or do a workshop or something. Yeah, Fisher Pickin?
I just said that from my experience as a somewhat recent student in this um, Department of Environmental and Geographical Sciences, that having someone there with community planning expertise, it's, it's never a bad thing. So I think that it'd be great if, yeah, I definitely support this letter and I would hope that we'd have some chance of getting the person.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thanks, Fisher Pickin. Any other thoughts on that, or would you be in motion?
Uh, I'll just add, um, I uh, went through a planning program uh, in Michigan. Uh, in that program, I met people from all over the world, uh, brought some cool ideas that I'd never heard before. Um, ways of dealing with things that we haven't really done much over this way. Um, and I learned a lot from them, so I think any time you can see other viewpoints in, it's probably a a good thing to, you know, learn from it at the least, so definitely.
Awesome, thank you. Great, alright, well I guess with your consent, I'll leave planning commission on there as sort of like people who support it.
I think our staff would fully support it, I think it'd be not just a one-way thing either, I think there's opportunity for an exchange of perspectives.
Great, great, again, oh yeah, good ad journey, you too David, if you want to be on there, or you're. Okay, fantastic. Great, well thanks for your support everybody, and we did get it, I think it really would be cool, but we'll see, they're very competitive to get, so. Alright, uh, moving on to agenda item five, citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items. Alright, we have no correspondence meetings or other boards, we have no training, we have no work sessions, so that brings us to commission and staff comments. Um, Fisher, you want to start us off?
No problem.
Thanks for all the work you guys did on that. Hundred and some pages.
Uh, no comment.
Uh, it's been a long process to get through all this, thanks for staff's work on this and thanks for everybody for their diligence in attending and going through all this, we've been on our agendas for the last couple of months.
Yeah, I really like that this has been added to our agendas, the look orders have been quite a bit, we had some great discussions, thank you for the extra and hard work.
Yeah, same here, I appreciate all your work and um, your close detail, like noticing where one line is absent, so thank you all for your work.
Has been interviewed, any comments?
Um, just uh, back to the point that Wayne brought up earlier when we were talking about the the hearing, um, we can certainly add that to our list to go back and look at next year review again, the part, the maximum parking standards, it seems there's areas where we can change, make some changes. Be appropriate. One of the things I always think of where, when I said that exchange of ideas do with somebody international, is even people from others even lower Michigan don't quite get how hard it is to work around the amount of snow we get here and how they amount of snow we get here impacts what, what our cupboard looks like. Like with those parking requirements, I mean, people always say, you guys should just do away with residential parking, they did it in this city and that city and and it's pretty hard when you've got a parking van on the streets and uh, you know, it's just six months of snow or something here. Anyway, we can look at the maximum parking standard though and Wayne, if you have some specific recommendations this time, you should tell us sooner than later. Alright, glad to uh, try to work on something.
I just uh, have to say thank you for the thank yous and thank you for your hard work as well.
I almost got some mic, I said thank you for thanking us. Okay, guys. But I'm very grateful to work with all of you and I'm very grateful that this meeting was forty-four minutes, that's like a record, so.
It's amazing.
We will enjoy the meeting at six twenty-four.